So there were no decisions taken at the closed meeting that was just held. Instructions were given and that's about it. It seems that we'll... There's only one item left to canvas. That's fine. So moved that we exit the closed meeting, moved by Councilor Simonneau, seconded by Councilor Levert. All those in favor, carry then, thank you. Announcement, does anyone have any announcement to make? Mr. Mayor, next Sunday, 25th of September at 12:30, the Franco-Onterrian flag shall be raised at the corner of Chamberland and Laporte Streets and the other very, very important point that I raised during the course of the last meeting concerning the provisional region of the Champaign Health Unit Centre. There's a decision that's going to be taken on the 28th and one of the stakeholders is aware that we live in the Champaign East region that excludes us, but we run up to Canaan's Road. Doctors ask that we join up to Ottawa East. Would we join up with Ottawa East? But there are a lot of challenges awaiting us if we do that. And I sent a map to each and every one of us to help us make an enlightened decision later on. Well, we might bring that up then during the next meeting. It'll give anyone a chance to, an opportunity at least, to take a look at the map that you've handed out. Well, there's a property that is suggested be contained in subgroups and subregions. And the concern is that we'd obtain our health services at the eastern extremity of where we are or in Cornwall. I'll try and meet up with Dr. Penci to obtain his help to make sense out of all of this. Harry Jones is also in charge of this file, thank you, of this matter. Saturday, 24th of September, we have a Run Through the Wilderness event that's scheduled. It's a super event, it's a, there's a two and a five kilometer challenge that's awaiting us. So I believe that Mr. Boucher has challenged all of us to run through the obstacle course. Mate, how many people have registered so far? Well, close to 700 individuals so far, Mr. Mayor. Well, that's quite encouraging, you know. As I mentioned, there is a five kilometer stretch to run and if, if the event's successful this year, they might come up with a 25 kilometer course to run next year. So this being said, it's looking good. Anything else to add? No, thank you very much. I was going to make the same type of announcement that my colleague has made, so that's about it. No other announcements? We'll find then. Look, we are invited, we have two tickets to attend the North Korea National Holiday and Mr. Keo will accompany us. Is there a dance that commemorates this event? Well, yes, I imagine there would be anyways. In any event, look, I'm asking Mr. Keo to attend with us. He's in charge, of course, of economic development for Clarence and Rockland and we already have a good rapport with the minister and the time is ripe now for us to meet with the ambassador there. And on the 25th of September also, Councilor Lallon mentioned that the Franco-Onterrian Day will be celebrated throughout the province and there will be events held to celebrate this important event. Now, the Franco-Onterrian flag was raised for the very first time in 1975 in Sudbury and since then, it has been hoisted here, there and everywhere throughout the province in those areas where Franco-Onterrians are located. Franco-Onterians are located in all four corners of the province of Ontario and the green and white flag has officially become the symbol of Franco-Onterians because of Mr. Jean-Marc Lallon's good efforts. So congratulations to all Franco-Onterians within Clarence and Rockland and we shall continue to be proud of our language and our heritage. That's it, question period. Does anyone have any questions to ask of Town Council? Go ahead, Mrs. Leroux.
Well, thank you. My name is Jocelyn Leroux. I live in 108 Livy Street in Borjett, Ontario.
All right. Now firstly, I'd like to thank members of Town Council, Mr. Mayor and yourself. We had Movies Under the Stars event in Borjett. It was phenomenal success and thank you very much for funds given to us to hold that event stemming from the Mayor's Golf Tournament. People always ask me when Movies Under the Stars event will be held, each and every year, and next year we'll hold a similar event again. Now, the next activity I'd like to propose is to decorate the trees that are set alongside the recreational trail and I hope that the township of Clarence and Rockland will take part in this embellishment project and that you'll sponsor a tree. Well, we're already sending a councillor sitting at this table to help you decorate a tree along the trail. Well, I'm expecting you, Mr. Mayor, to be there and also you. My aunt is also be there and Mr. Lallon on this particular side and Mr. Jean-Marc Lallon is also invited. So we're always trying to come up with different events, different type events to stimulate that sense of belonging to our village so that it remains a vibrant one, a vibrant community. My name is on the committee of the whole question period. Should I ask my question then or should I ask my question now? We do have a question period scheduled for the committee of the whole meeting. Yeah, I think you should ask your questions during the committee of the whole meeting. Should you allow me, Mr. Mayor, when you're at that point to express myself to Town Council then? For a point I'd like to raise at the committee of the whole, thank you. Well, I know that you're in the throes of your, the 2017 budgetary talks right now, budgetary negotiations and I'd like to ask maybe a question to Mr. Boucher. But do you intend to modify the playground structures that are located at the Borjett Community Centre? I don't know if this is in the works for 2017. If not, it might be a good idea to put this into action for 2018. Of course, we've got the skate park, the splash bath, but the, that's in good shape. But our playground is, falls short of some good facilities. I know that there is, there are, there's not much set aside for this purpose in 2017, but maybe in 2018 might be worthwhile to put some money aside. And how about your last question, ma'am? Well, fine. Well, given Mrs. Schwanier's absence and because she's not able to attend the committee, committee meetings on a regular basis, who do we send our concerns or our questions to? Well, to myself or Town Councilors? We don't want to overburden her and because she's resting at present. Well, if you're comfortable with one of Town Councilors, then you can send your questions along and they'll be debated through that Town Councilor. That's fine. There's this, Mrs. Collier, I'll raise, Mrs. Collier to my right has responded to an email that I sent to you concerning a question I needed to clarify and I thank her for prompt reply. But however, if I do send a question, someone will respond, yes. Well, often also, if you do send a question along, we might wait for the advice from a member of town administration before answering your, your, your email. But it is to be, it will be answered in a timely fashion. So in any event, the last email that I sent, I forwarded to everyone here at the table. This lady and that lady, I don't believe that I sent my email to Monique and I'm sorry if I forgot to send you an email, Monique, but I just wanted to know, given Mrs. Schwanier's personal situation right now. Well, did someone from the township of Clarence and Rockland answer your last email? Your concern? Yes? Yes. Yes, Monique and I had a conversation and your chief administrative officer also answered me quite nicely. Yes, so thank you very much for your patience. All right, any other questions? Fine then, that's it. Let's go on now to item number nine, council members' items. Mr. Simonneau, do you have, you will, you will take over from me or shall I continue on presiding over this meeting? Let's go on now, hold on. Because we're on to consent items afterwards. Believe we had adopted some resolutions that are still on tonight's agenda. Well, let's go on to consent items. If no members have any items to consider, consent, are there any changes with regards to consent? Are there any items to be withdrawn? Section 10.3, A, B, C, D, E. I'm sorry. 10.3 sub A, B, C and E. Fine then. 10.3 A, B, C and E. All right then. Anything else? Well, be it resolved of the following items as identified under the consent items category on the regular meeting agenda of September the 19th, 2016, be adopted. 10.1, minutes of the following meetings. A, regular meeting of September the 6th, 2016. B, special meeting of August the 30th, 2016. C, committee of the whole, September, September the 6th, 2016. 10.2, receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. A, committee of adjustment, minutes of August the 24th, 2016. B, heritage advisory committee, minutes of June the 21st, 2016. C, accessibility advisory committee, May 10th, 2016. 10.4, adoption of the salaries paid from July 31st, 2016 to August the 27th, 2016 in the gross amount of $794,124.57 and net amount of $577,812.51. Seconded by? Councilor Zant, all those in favor? Thank you. So let's revisit now, 10.3 sub A. Whereas the city of Clarence and Rockland received a letter from the village or from the town of Lake Shore to support their resolution with regard to the debt that was incurred because of the 2015 Pan Am and Parapan Am games that were held. Be it resolved, the Town Council supports the resolution that was adopted in 2016 by the town of Lake Shore in regard to debt incurred from the 2015 Pan Am and Parapan Am games as recommended. Mr. Mayor, the reason why I made this comment is this. We, windfalls stemming from the 2015 Pan Am game benefited everyone throughout the province. Now, if province or if a town organizes something that's overseen financially by the government, it's because we do have financial windfalls that stem from those events. So any other comments then? So we'll, well, it's a consent item, Mr. Mayor. We don't need to take a vote on this. Well, we opened it up for individual discussion, so. Sir Lallon?
Well, I thought that the reason why this was to be debated at the regular meeting was this. We believe that the city of Toronto was called upon to pay for this event. They were hosting that particular event. By default, they're very close to where those events occurred and I'm sure that they would have reaped most of the economic windfalls because of the close proximity of all Pan Am games. Well, Toronto really received, benefited from all of that. Well, the entire province benefited from all of this. Well, hotel rentals benefited throughout, benefited Ontario throughout. Well, taxes were paid out to Toronto. Well, 13% goes to the provincial government. And I understand also that the federal government received something as well. Ottawa also received a direct benefit from this. Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm a bit confused there. I know exactly what Mr. Lallon is stating and I'm sorry, Mr. Lallon. I apologize. Well, both, both Mr. Lallons, it seems to me that when you're raising this issue, are you pro or con this issue?
Well, I'm against this resolution. I read it as prepared, but I'm, I'm, I stand against this resolution. Even though he stands in favor of it, doesn't change much of anything. Well, I sympathize their situation. I sympathize with their situation because Lake Shore didn't receive any benefits from the Pan Am games. We see, we were supposed to have Ontario games here in 2000, and I don't recall, but counties decided otherwise, United Counties decided otherwise. Now, the province had given out some funds for that purpose and everyone was paying for that particular activity through, everyone throughout the province. Well, you know, the Navin plowing match, when it incurred a huge deficit, who paid out for that deficit? Was it Ottawa or was it the rest of the province that sent out money? Well, the, the plowing match event is completely different. There is an amount of money given out by the Ministry of Agriculture to help implement this event. The International Plowing Match, let's vote on this now. All in favor of this letter to support Lake Shore? Fine. Approved. Support it. So did someone second this resolution before it was carried? Yes, I believe so. Let's go on now to the second resolution to be dealt with individually. Councilor Lallon?
Well, I was in favor of it as it was presented to council.
Fine.
This resolution to accept the design and selection criteria for the proposed new signs to identify the city and its community sectors. Well, I just wanted to make a point. Be it resolved that Town Council accept the design and selection criteria, set out in report info 2016-34 and be also resolved that this project be implemented in keeping with the two-step process enumerated in this report. Two, to complete A, a concept design plan and the selection plan and two, the manufacture installation of these signs and be resolved that a city designated Rockland be put up and two, and that a new sign be added in Clarence, to in Clarence Point and Clarence Creek and that these eyes be relocated to reflect the limit of the urban sprawl and the urban limits set out in the official plan of the United Counties of Prescott Russell. Fine, seconded by Councilor Simonneau. The only reason why I brought that up on an individual basis is that I wanted to make sure that we had reflective paint on those signs, Mr. Mayor. Because you see, at night, when you drive by, you can't even see them, even though they're put up on the side of the road. So, Mr. Carrière, would you please ensure that this be done? All those in favor then? Carry, thank you. Next item to be debated. Item C, resolution to accept the statement of reserve funds relating to the development charges for 2015. Go ahead. Whereas the treasurer of the municipality must hand each and every year to Town Council a statement of reserve funds relating to the development charges in keeping with section 33, 1987, sub 27, paragraph 23, sub 1 of the 1997 Development Charges Act. As a result, be resolved that Town Council of the Clarence and Rockland accept the statement of reserve funds relating to the development charges for the year 2015, seconded by Councilor Guirimah. Yes, well, the question I do have, I might have asked a question in another, another way, but in any event, this demonstrates that as of the 31st of December, we only had $770,924 in reserve. Do you have any explanation as to this, Mr. Keo?
Well, there's one thing that I can add to this, Mr. Mayor. One thing, one thing. If you remember, we contracted a loan in February and the, we obtained authority to contract a $12.6 million loan. Two million of this 12.6 million is to plow back money in the development charges. Now, there's going to be more money incoming this year along with other income from other monies coming in this year. We'll contract other loans, but this, these loans will be paid out out of our reserve funds. So we contracted a loan to allow us to continue with works that are funded by capital expenditures. Yes, yes. Now, as of the 1st of January 2016 until the 30th of August 2016, do you have, do you have the amount accumulated derived from the development charges? Well, I can get back to you on that. Fine, well, fine then. Thank you. Let's go on now to 10.3 sub D, resolution to approve an additional 2,800? Oh, I didn't contest D, Mr. Mayor. That's the, you're referring to D right now. Sir Lallon asks that E, I believe, be withdrawn. Resolution to authorize an expense for an ongoing investigation. All right, that's the one we wish to withdraw. Be resolved that Town Council, Town Council authorize an expense in the, up to $10,000, taken out of the contingency fund for an ongoing investigation. Questions, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Lallon, is this the one? Is this 10.3 sub E? Yes, that's right, sub E. That's the ongoing police investigation, right? That the township of Clarence and Rockland is involved in? Yes, all right, all those in favor? Carry then, well, that's fine. Fine, fine. It was seconded by Councilor Guirimah. 11.1, accounts paid. Adoption? Well, no, we're up to 10.4, Mr. Mayor. Well, we did, yes, 11.1, be it resolved that the cash paid from June 31st to August 27th in the amount of $14,713.64 be accepted as presented. Questions? Yes, all those in favor? Well, I did have a question here, Mr. Mayor. Page two. Temporary adjustment taxes. Now, are those calls made to MPAC, MPAC? In the amount of 3,400 and some odd dollars? Well, Mr. Mayor, those were payments made doubly and the mortgage company returned back a portion of the taxes that were involuntarily paid doubly. Oh, we had a double payment then, I see. Storm sewers, I have another item to question here. Storm sewers on Claude Street, an amount of $17,493. Is this amount recoverable from the municipality, from the developer? I'm sorry, or not? No, it is not. It is not recoverable from the developer. This is not a defect, sir? In the development plans, in the development itself? No, no, no. You see, the project dates back to 2015. There was $100,000 that was earmarked to rectify a problem that was encountered by a particular resident. Up to now, we had occasion to spend $24,000. We still have about $50,000 to spend, left to spend on alleviating this situation. Also on page 39, Leroux consultant. Those are municipal drains, that relates to municipal drains. Does that fall within the parameters of the agreement that we signed with the province whereby we'd receive a percentage? Well, yes, yes. We should, we should stand to receive a grant of approximately 10 or 20,000 dollars from the government. Well, thank you. I also had questions with regard to this and I was, I sent you an email for clarification. I was answered quite time, in quite a timely fashion. I thank you very much for that. Any other questions? Thank you then. 11.2, proposed budget meeting dates. Moved by? Whereas the preliminary budget 2016 will be handed to council for revision purposes during the committee of the whole meeting held on the 21st of November 2016 and whereas Town Council intends to consider the adoption of the 2017 final budget during its regular meeting of the 19th of December 2016, be it resolved that special proposed budget meeting dates for the committee of the whole be set to discuss the 2017 budget. Tuesday, 22nd of November at 1800 hours. Tuesday, 29th of November, if necessary, at 1800 hours and Wednesday, the 30th of November, if necessary, at 1800 hours. Seconded by Councilor Guirimah. Any questions? I just want to make sure that 6 PM, 1800 hours, is not all that early. Some might come in a bit late because of work in Ottawa. Did you not mention the 21st in your last email? So that's no longer in your email, so the, 22nd and the 23rd? Well, actually, we're, we're piggybacking on top of a regularly scheduled meeting for one of those proposed budget meeting dates. We're doing our very best to have everybody together to discuss budgetary matters. One last question, I just hope that the dates of the 20th and the 30th. Well, I, I, I know we're involved in a lot of meetings and we're keeping those in reserve now for myself, Mr. Mayor. I don't think I'll be able to make the 29th, 29th, nor will I be able to meet the 30th of November meetings. Fine, thank you then. All those in favor? Carry then, thank you. Bylaws. 11.3, Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, 11.3. Storm water management master plan, Councilor Simonneau? Just give me a second to pinpoint this, Mr. Mayor. Be it resolved that Town Council adopt a bylaw 2016-109 that authorizes the mayor and the clerk to grant a contract to CC Catum and Associates limited in the amount of $55,514, excluding provincial sales tax to identify the needs, the future needs with regards to the installation of storm sewer systems in keeping with changes proposed by the Ministry of the Environment. Second? Seconded by Councilor Zant? Go ahead, I believe I had a question. No, no, go ahead, Councilor Zant, the floor is yours. No, no, you go ahead, sir, I insist. I'm just wondering this. Now, if, developers had stepped to the forefront with a different way of installing storm sewers, making use of ditches, would this contingency, even though it has not been used, be considered? And secondly, are we going to solicit the developers' participation as well as the engineers' opinion involved in this? Or are we just going to be a slave to a report with them telling us, you know, this is God's law? Well, Mr. Mayor, Well, Mister Mayor. I think the question is, could superpond, could superponds be set up that would be shared by many developers? Does our storm sewer system now have the capacity to take in more? So, this is part and parcel of water flow throughout all properties within Clarence and Rockland. The city of Clarence and Rockland. Well. My question is this, are we going to try to? Obtain? Are, are we going to try and determine what the industry thinks of this, what the developers involved in all of this? Well, if we do have a plan to work with, then we'll have to obtain the developers' opinion as to this. As well as the residents that live within the developed areas. Councillor Giri Ma, I'd just like to draw your attention to a small section of the report that we have before you. I believe that you mentioned that there's a difference of close to one-half, all right? And we've been given a chart. C C Tatham has two amounts for two particular steps, and now we're deal with the C H two M with. Another amount involving three steps. Now, we don't know if the C C Tatham report will resemble to the C H two M proposal. Or the other proposals, or is it going to be a bit more competitive? I hope we won't be caught by surprise with a site, with, you know, steps, with a step C from C C Tatham. You know, we were given an initial price of a hundred and five thousand dollars, all right? I understand. I thought we'd have received a report, Mister Mayor, along with a chart of what I've identified, let's say A, B, C for all three projects. Or if it's H two M, we should have had a result for step A and B to compare both. Both steps. We have A and B for one, and then we have three steps for another one, and four steps for another one. It's difficult to go ahead with this because we don't know what the A and B will cost us. With C C Tatham involved, but we do know what those steps will cost us for other tenders. But what we asked for, C C Tatham is the only one, Mister Mayor, is the only one that responded to the bid according to what we asked for. C H two M and W S B gave us additional information. So we didn't ask for A, B, C, D. No, no, we only asked for A and B. Well, that's correct. Well, how come we don't have amounts for C H two M or A, B, C? Are there other amounts? I'm sure you understand where I'm coming from. I don't want to be caught with an extra a hundred thousand dollars. From C C Tatham. Well, the logic here is that A was a very well-defined package that each had to respond to, number one. And they both responded with very different prices for something that was very well-defined in the R S B. Now, on B, of course, you're looking at future requirements, it's, it's understandable. And the other two had added other tasks, C and D. Something they want to bid on if it's approved in the two thousand and seventeen budget. Now, based on A, I know that C C Tatham, for the same amount of work, are a lot cheaper than the other two. The reason behind that is that they're a smaller company, lesser overhead, better experience at doing what we're looking for. As opposed to the other two, based on their performance and experience they've provided to us in their R F P, R F P response. Well, I'll finish this, well, I'll finish by saying this. Next time, it would be nice to have something broken down, A and B for both. If they can't provide that, then reformulate the tender. Because right now, we're asked to make a decision when we don't have the three exact same, and if they are lower, good, fine. But right now, I can only see that they're lower for A. They might be higher for C and D later on, however. That's my only point. Mister Mayor, councillor Simonneau? You know, it, it does lead to confusion because C C Tatham provided prices on A and B. C H two M provided prices on A and B and C, and then W S B. Provided prices for, on A and then B, C, D, without no separation. You know, it's, you need to look at the tender documents. If I look at those results, nobody put in prices for the same thing. I'm sorry, but that's how it is. To me, as much as we're being compelled by the Ministry of the Environment to. Do this, to me, I'm not going to say it's a small job, but, you know, look, it's definitely, we need to improve. Because this is. Councillor Lalande, Mister Mayor, to follow up as to what was said, the lowest is fifty-five thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars. We have three tenders, and the other one is a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. That's three times the initial price. Well, W S B tendered on A, B, C and D. C C Tatham tendered on section A and B. And C H two M, complicated matters, and tendered on A, B, C. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mister Caddie, but you'd act for tenders on A and B. That's right, we'd act for A and B. They, the others had jumped the gun, right? Well, I have no problem for them to have jumped the gun. But the report submitted to the council should separate A and B, set, set it apart as per the tender document. Well, I'm not in agreement with the approach you're taking, Mister Mayor. You see, I take a look at the report, the report states. The report states, the report states, if you take a look at it, C H two M. They have R S B's option. C is put down already. It's an option, but, and it was. Tendered on. Why was it not an option that was identified separate and apart? Because now we've got apples, potatoes and cucumbers that have been tendered on. Well, we'd identified in our tender process that part C was optional depending on the next budget. It was clearly stated in a call to tender. We didn't expect to obtain any prices with regard to those components. However, two of those that did tender did go well and beyond what we requested. And put in everything in one price. So I cannot, you know, break down their tender offer. With B, C and D, I can't do that. Well, there's nothing in the R S, R F P that should be optional. Look, you know, you make it either mandatory or you don't put it in. To me, why would you say optional, then all of a sudden the others don't fill it in? Now, we have no way, like everybody's saying, on how to measure exactly or to gauge exactly what's going to be bought. Well, let me say that W S B was proactive, going a step or two steps further. It shows that they know what they're doing, and at least I have a price from W S B, but C C Tatham and the other. Well, why would they have not put in things separately? Because they're mixing things up. So C H two M and W S B, well, should have put in an item under B as the other one had done. And then after that, adding the other two components, but separate and apart. I have no problem with that, but we have to think about the tender. Was it properly drawn up? If it was, I, I, I think it's kind of questionable. Why two out of the three tendering parties did not respect? Our call to tender documents. Well, Mister Caddie, you know, you, I, I hope you won't come back to town council and say, well, you know. That we're going to wind up with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar bill when all is said and done. I understand, Mister Mayor. The, there's still going to be a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars out of a two hundred thousand dollar initial budget. To do what needs to be done. Definitely, C C Tatham's price is over and beyond the other prices. You know, we'll then have to proceed with items C and D. So. In light of what has been said around the council table, that if we are to tackle items C and D. Why don't we get a price for C and D? Well, because the money was. I was mandated to set out tender documents for A and B. Well, Mister Caddie, you say that you can't break down the eighty-seven, eighty-eight thousand dollar figure. That's interplay by one of those company. How can we determine the price, C H, put forward by C H two B and other companies? Well, look, you see, they define all steps that need to be taken. We expected that the work was to be completed as of the thirty-first of December. C H two M, W S B. Projected forward until the thirty-seven, thirty-first of April, two thousand and seventeen, projected what needed to be done. They went over and above. Well, the C H two M and W S B amount is how much for item or component lead? I can't break this down with, given their call, their tender. Well, why can't we break those down if we're not cognizant of the in and outs, ins and outs for the others? Well, look, 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 can we not go back depending on what our two thousand and seventeen budget allows? This is what we want, A, B, C, D, E, or A, B, C, D? Is that not a potential possibility? Well, you know, to ask that this be done separately and. And state that if the budget allows us to do us, to do it, then give us your price for the rest of what needs to be done. Just to clarify your price, for the purposes of, you know, clarifying your price. I thought we'd asked that this be done for some reason, that, well, I believe we asked this previously. And this is what we received tonight. It's certainly not very clear, is it? Mister Mayor, of course, we're pressed for time, but it's not our fault if we are pressed for time. Well, do you want to table this then? Can we still give a directive, Mister Mayor, to town administration that if they don't go about in this particular fashion? Just call C H two M and W S B and ask them to give us an amount for A and B? And then we'll be able, then we'll be able to compare. If we can save twenty-five thousand dollars, that's fine. And invest it someplace else to shore up facilities in another village, that's fine. Well, it's nice to ask them to say, well, come up with an amount for B and then C and whatever. But Tatham, right now, to have this work completed. Tatham needs to complete part of component C, and do we have a cost attached to the work that needs to be done for part of component C? It's nice to say that, yeah, it's well a nice to say we have two hundred thousand dollars in the budget, but we can't, you know, throw money out of the window like this. Well, fine, that's why we're tabling this. So, let's just ask Mister Caddie that all three contractors either tender for A, B, C. Or A and B, you know, because the amounts do vary. Well, if I have a. One amount. At least that it relate to one thing only. Would it be possible, Mister Caddie? To send an electronic copy of the tender document that was handed to consultants? Yes, of course. So I move that we table this particular resolution, seconded by councillor Lalande. All those in favor then? Carry. Fine. Let's go on now to item twelve, bylaws, twelve-point-one. Are there any bylaws that you wish to withdraw from that list of bylaws? None? Go ahead, Mister. Hold on a minute, Mister Mayor. Oh, hold on. I believe that councillor Simonneau has raised his finger, and I don't think it's because he has trouble with his finger, have you raised it? Well, I would like to withdraw twelve-point-two, Mister Mayor, because I'm going to call for a registered vote with regards to item two, twelve-point-two. All right then. Be resolved of the following bylaws, we adopted: twelve-point-one, two thousand and sixteen dash one thirteen. To award a contract to Cornwall Freightliner for the purchase of a tandem truck and its accessories. Required to remove snow and de-iced, de-ice asphalted roadways. Twelve-point-three, two thousand and sixteen dash one twenty-eight, to award a contract to playground planners for the purchase of play structures for Mountain View Park. And bylaw two thousand and sixteen dash one twenty-nine, to authorize the use of the maintenance and reconstruction of roads reserve fund. For the installation of new traffic lights at the intersection of Laurier and Laporte. Seconded by councillor Giri Ma. All those in favor of those particular bylaws? Fine. Let's tackle now item twelve-point-two, bylaw two thousand and sixteen dash one twenty-four. Let me read the resolution. Mister Mayor, that leads to the bylaw. I'll try and come up with a resolution before I go any further. Hold on. Yes, two thousand and sixteen dash one twenty-four, to authorize an increase of eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars and ten cents to the contract. With Partham Allet Engineering Limited in order to proceed with the paving of the intersection at the corner of Laurier and Laporte. Paving of the intersection Laurier and Laporte. Questions? Councillor Simonneau? Mister Mayor, I come back to comments I made last time around. I did not unfortunately take part. I did not attend both May meetings whereby the Partham. Company was awarded. The project. Now, you see. We'll wind up paying a phenomenal sum to repair that particular intersection, the Laurier-Laporte intersection. I'm certainly against, against. You know, those adjustments or those additions. So that you recommend that we honor the original contract. And not those additional costs that have been tacked on. So, any questions? Councillor Zant? How much money have we budgeted in total? Two hundred thousand dollars, councillor, uh, I'm sorry, councillor Zant? I don't have the other report, however. You see, there's an amount of a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, and we're up to two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars now. You see, the only reason I'm asking this is. Because the last time Mister Kappu was here, he had a different way of explaining things now. The eighty-seven thousand dollar amount includes what? Why are we doing this exactly? You see, he was making use of the. Of a particular expression he was using. In any event, are you able to explain further the discrepancy? Well. Well, we are putting on, we're, we're, we're putting in detector nod, modules in the street. We can invent them in asphalt and eventually, well, we can work on the intersection, but then we're called upon to tear it up afterwards. Or we just install the traffic signs, the traffic signals, and everything is done in one fell swoop. Well, I would like to ask why this was not thought out, included in the initial budget to allow us to take a final decision then. You see, we knew that those sensors, so sensors, those modules were already included in the budget for pavement. Well, you see, part and parcel of the project included traffic, a traffic study that was commissioned. And the type of traffic signals we were going to put up, you know, left turn signals to be put up. How the traffic lights were going to be controlled. So. If we expected those monitors or modules to be put into the asphalt. What, what, look, look, this intersection resembles closely the Laurier-Carron intersection, does it not? See, I'm a little confused as to why we just come up with this now, almost as if we've never thought of this before. Well, at the budget time, at budget time, if you recall, the discussion was around whether we were going to put in a roundabout at Laurier and Laporte. Remember? Yes. And at that time, that we decided, council decided that it was too expensive to do a roundabout. And it was going to be too complicated because we were going on to other properties, and it was more urgent to get a traffic light installed. So there was a decision made at that time, a quick decision, you know, to put two hundred thousand dollars in to put up traffic lights. Well, you know, installed at that intersection. So, so, upon further review, when the engineers went in, they came back with the suggestion. That they could pave and give us this option. We don't have to do this. But that's not what I'm getting at, though, if you'll let me finish there. I completely understand the point. I remember very well talking about traffic signals and lights. But what I'm trying to think, before throwing out a number like two hundred thousand dollars at the time. It just seems to me that we didn't think at three. We just threw out a number and say, well, we'll come back later and revisit it. So, if we wanted to do lights, why don't we actually come up in budget time with an actual proper estimate? With how much it was going to cost us to do lights, and we felt that we needed sensors and lights? Well, lights were not an op, an option at that point. We're not just talking solely about paving here. When Richard Kappu was here, was in attendance. He'd also talked about pushing over the sidewalk towards the northeast side of Laurier and Laporte. And rebuild the said sidewalk, because when trucks have occasion to turn there, they're always, you know, overstep the sidewalk. You know what I mean? Yes, yes, of course. There's more than asphalt work to be done there. We have to reconfigure the sidewalk also. And that, you see. there was an emergency amount we could have taken, uh, we, we'd set aside at two hundred thousand dollars. Once the engineer's design is over and done with, we were told then that it was going to cost us two hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars, but don't forget that a round point is, is, it, it, it's quite a pricey item. I just wanted to clarify this matter. Yes, I'm just asking the question again. Let me get back to this again. If we decide to leave the pavement as is and to put in sensors in the existing pavement in eight or 10 years from now, if we decide to modify that area, how much hurt is it going to cost us? Are we talking about twenty thousand dollars to redo this portion? Fifteen, ten thousand, or one hundred thousand dollars? Peanuts, maybe? Well, peanuts as compared to the construction project, really, as a whole. Well, why don't we wait? We have difficulty repairing our roadways, and we're going to borrow ninety thousand dollars from the Road Reserve Fund to pay this? I'm saying that we have other roadways that is, that are in dire, dire need of ninety thousand dollars worth of repair, much more than this intersection. Well, at the last meeting, we mentioned the following. If we were to do this, we could have new asphalt poured out right up to Highway seventeen, but after that, we were told that they could only go up to Chamberlain, and that they were going to put in a patch in between Chamberlain and the intersection. It seems as if this is a huge puzzle that we're called upon to play around with. I'm saying, let's install the traffic signals, let's make the modifications that need to be made to the sidewalk, and that's it, that's it. Is everyone in agreement with this? Fine, so so this leaves us with what? Well, if they need additional funds, well, if, if, if we work on twelve point four and reconsider it anew, well, we're talking about two hundred and seventy four thousand dollars. Now, if we talk about pushing off or displacing the sidewalk as opposed to where it is right now, there's, there are extras involved. Well, we should have extras, you know, in the amount of five or ten thousand dollars, but really, not to the extent where the amount to close to eighty thousand dollars, that doesn't make sense. So who's, who does oppose this resolution? I, I, I just want to make sure that we understand what we're getting into now. Now, we're just refusing, we just refuse to do the paving. Well, if we work, work over the intersection, I hope that we'll follow through. So they'll do work on the intersection. We'll have to make sure that what sidewalks, the sidewalk will be repaired this year? We, we've already voted an amount with regard to that. We'll, we'll come up with another report. Well, and sidewalks will be repaired this year, will they not? Sir, will they not? Well, yes, yes. If this is approved for the month of October, we'll be able to repair those, the sidewalks that need to be repaired as of November. Look, the traffic light contract is already awarded. They can start at any time they wish to. Right? Yes, the lights will be put up, Mr. Mayor. Traffic lights will be put up. Well, fine, let's go to tender and let's go back. Let's come back with a resolution. You come back with a resolution for us, and if the price is right, we'll approve it. But let's clarify this now. The posts will be put up further along the roadway. Now it's going to, because otherwise it's going to cost us much more than twenty thousand dollars. Mr. Mayor, it seems as if we're going about this backwards. Sidewalks should be adjusted before the traffic lights are put up. I'm not an engineer. I apologize. I'm not an engineer. Well, maybe you should be, Counselor Zant. Well, I don't think I'd be a great, uh, a great architect or engineer. Look, we know where the lights will be in relation to the sidewalk. So we can put up the light wall, the, the, the lights up irregardless, regardless of where the sidewalk will be. We fine, and we'll go to tender for work to be done on the sidewalk. Well, that seems bizarre in any event. Well, I know. The Partham part, the eighty seven thousand dollars worth of extras, there was a part set aside for sidewalks. There was a part set aside that would have allowed them to rebuild the intersection from top to bottom. Now, let's ask Partham if there's, there are some unforeseen extras, if there's a mount set aside for unforeseen extras. How much of that amount would be earmarked to repair sidewalks if it's damaged? Well, there's a contingency of about five percent. You can't, you can't do much much sidewalk, you can't work over much sidewalk with five percent contingency fees set aside for extras. It's quite a stretch of sidewalk we're talking about here. All right. So, Mr. Caddie, you'll come back to council with this then? So in principle, we are against? Yes? Yes, we're against. Well, that's fine. Well, fine. So you prefer to reconsider item twelve point four, bylaw two thousand sixteen dash one twenty nine? You, you're asking this to be reconsidered. Well, ma'am, we're authorizing to perform the transfer, but we're not proceeding with the expenditure, so we don't have to proceed with the transfer. So are we installing the lights? Yes or no? Yes, yes, we are. We've only voted, however, on the asphalt tonight. So let's set aside some provisions of item twelve point four to make sure that there's money set aside for sidewalk. Now, for the people tuning in, we don't intend to perform work on Lorient-La Porte from dawn to dusk. But what right now is being published on Facebook is quite false for those who are tapping into Facebook. Mr. Caddie? Uh, uh, Mr. Caddie, are we going to close the road or not? Well, no, no, we're not going to close the road. But there's paving involved. Yes, there's paving involved, Miss Counselor Allen. The only thing that we need to do, however, is this, is to install some piping in between traffic lights so that wires can run from one traffic post to another traffic post or light post, so we can proceed lane by lane in laying those down. No problem. Fine. Confirmatory bylaw be resolved. Town council of the city of Clarence and Rockland adopt bylaw number two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen dash one twenty five being a confirmatory bylaw for the regular meeting of town council held on the nineteenth of September, two thousand and sixteen, seconded by Counselor Zant. All those in favor? All those in favor? We'll have to, all we need to do is to adjourn to attend the committee of the whole meeting. So, fine, fine. Adjourned then at eight forty. We'll take ten minutes break. Thank you.